Welcome to the September 10th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Common Council. It is now 7:01 PM and we'll begin with public participation. I have three names on the list. You come up, please state your name and address for the record. And again, you have three minutes, and then I'll recognize anybody else who wishes to speak remotely or in the audience. Our first speaker tonight is Frank Chase.
Dear Mayor Stewart, our city officials over the past 30 years have failed to upgrade the compromised Allen Street storm sewer system. This includes 12 years on your watch. Our due diligence since 2023 has uncovered the facts. We have been proactive with the assistance of Majority Leader McNamara, making the required effort to appeal to your good senses. Leader McNamara understands the peril our neighborhoods, blocks, and properties are in. It seems you do not understand. Common sense tells us if you did understand after 12 years in office, you would have surely prioritized fully funded and constructed the Allen Street project. As a reminder, we were invited by you to voice our concerns regarding your priorities and your fiscal behavior. Our criticisms are fact-based, as we have detailed for you in all of our narratives. You wrote to us, "You are not kind to me, and you will never be." It's difficult to be kind and joyful while our neighborhoods, blocks, and properties are flooding. We are the victims, not you. Why have you failed to step up to fully fund and construct the Allen Street project? Why have you singled out all of us in the Allen Street neighborhoods to suffer through these ongoing hazardous conditions? Your allies sat in our living room repeating their mantra, "We have no money for the Allen Street project." Meanwhile, you received hundreds of millions of earmarked free dollars from our state and federal partners. The Allen Street project was conveniently lost in the fiscal shuffle while you prioritized other higher-profile projects. Bottom line, no one was advocating for this critical project until we stepped up with Leader McNamara in 2023. You now claim you have a $25 million unassigned balance in the general fund. Mayor Stewart, you are $6 million short for the Allen Street project. After 12 years, here is another opportunity for you to finally correct the Allen Street problem. You wrote memos but never stepped up and with the required determination to complete the job. As you have noted, the Allen Street project is our most pressing need, and Allen Street is a definite hazard. As we have noted, you continue to fail all of the taxpayers in New Britain. Meanwhile, the flooding, infiltration, cross-connections, and sanitary issues continue. In 2023, Weston Simpson engineers declared the Allen Street project must be a priority because the infrastructure is at crisis levels. To date, you have refused to prioritize, fully fund, and construct the Allen Street project. The cause and effect is undeniable. Our taxpayers deserve better than this. Our quality of life continues to suffer. Our safety continues to be in harm's way, and 50-plus properties and structures are all at risk. Why do you continue to ignore the critical nature of the Allen Street problem when you have the resources to construct the Allen Street project now? Why are you choosing to ignore all of us in the Allen Street neighborhoods? Mayor Stewart, you have the authority to correct these hazardous conditions, and it's your responsibility to correct these hazardous conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Our next speaker is Michelle Stuart-Copes.
I live at 281 Rocky Hill Avenue here in New Britain, and I chair the NAACP Economic Development Committee as well as the Multicultural Business Association with Candace Scott. And I'm here to support the Multicultural Business Directory petition. I really think it can truly help the city because the majority of our population is multicultural. It can only develop the commerce in our city, the economic revenue gaps, which is the goal of the NAACP, and it can build and bolster the tax revenue base so that businesses can stay and be supported. The purpose of this directory is so that we can all know who each other is. We really don't know that, and to have a public listing of it will help us to be able to support each other, to be able to make referrals, and to keep cities here in New Britain. We recently had a potluck meeting on the 25th, and it was really great, and Devon Tanksley had come to speak with us. He owned My Wife Didn't Cook, and he talked about how it really would have been beneficial if we had invested in each other, supported each other, really was able to be there to promote our businesses, and also to make the city better as a wonderful multicultural city rich in its ethnicity. So I hope that you support it. I hope that you help to develop it because it will be the first time it's been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Third speaker on the list is Tina Santana.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tina Santana, 27 West Main Street, New Britain, Connecticut, and I am here to speak on the resolution actually right around the motorbikes and the street takeovers that really impact my life. You guys would usually see me here talking about school district stuff because I do serve on the Board of Ed, but the reality is, like all of you, we live in the city of New Britain, and we are faced with the same issues, and I'm pretty sure you are too, if you're going to be supporting this. I thank you. If you are not, I ask you to reconsider. I have four special needs kids. They are medically complex. It ranges from autism to, well, the oldest is in palliative care. And so in reality, they all take medication to be able to sleep. Once they're asleep, the prayer is that they're going to stay asleep, and when they can't, well, we all have to suffer. But the reality is, these motorbikes coming by, it is crazy. I live off of a main drag. They actually pick up speed. And at that point, you will see that in the group of them, they will actually work together organization to block the street off so that they can all get together and pass. It's a problem because I've, you know, in my pajamas, Puerto Ricans, you know, boxer shorts, wife beater, chancras, get outside to go pull somebody out of a car or say, "Hey, please stop," and this is just kind of what you get. And so what I'm asking you to do is to please support, and in your good conscience, I hope you all will, support being able to allow our officers to put a stop to that. You don't find adults on the back of these little motorbikes. You actually find young kids, sometimes adults. They're riding tandem two at a time on a one-seater. They should be getting ready for school too, and instead they're on these motorbikes. So I just really wanted to be able to just ask you all, give our police the opportunity to be able to help us as the residence partner with us to be able to get this to stop, please, for the sake of my kids, that I need to have a good rest. And as you know, any parent over here, you have the responsibility of making sure that your child gets sleep and is ready for school the next day. We tell our kids in the school district that. We should be, we should actually be modeling that, making sure that nobody is keeping our kids up in the middle of the night. So I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. That's all the names I have on the list. Are, is anybody calling in remotely? Okay, nobody calling remotely? Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else? Hearing none, this concludes public participation. I'd invite any older persons to comment briefly on what they've heard in public. Alderwoman, Beloinesevra.
Thank you. I'm disappointed that Mr. Chase left because he referenced two of the mayor's colleagues who sat in his living room. I was one of those colleagues who spent hours with him in his living room when I first came back to the council to learn about the issues on Allen Street. I walked the neighborhood with Mr. Chase, with the entire state delegation, with the two legislative chairs of the bonding subcommittee. So there has been efforts beyond yourself, with all due respect, Alderman McNamara, to understand what's happening at Allen Street and where we can go. At the time, you and I walked the street with our state delegation, and again, the two chairs from Hartford, they told us that if the city came up with one-third of the price of the project, most likely our bond would go through at the state level. Well, we have come up with $6 million towards this project, and correct me if I'm wrong, the State Bond Commission came up with $2. So in the scale of who came up with what pot of money, city of New Britain, $6 million; state of Connecticut, $2 million. When what was told to us is, if we came up with a third, the state would pony up the rest of the money. So I don't see it as the city of New Britain falling short on its promise or commitment. I see the states falling short on what they told us, and it was said to me as well as everybody else, including our state delegation, who was there that day. I am committed to keep finding money for Allen Street, but let's just put it in a very clear and factual perspective here. We came up with the money we said we would come up with, the state did not. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other remarks briefly? Alderwoman Scott.
Hi, I just want to thank, well, first, let me say peace and love. I want to thank Frank for coming out, and I know he left a little early, but he may watch this later, and I'm sure he'll be able to hear what we're saying. I think that, you know, this just needs to be fixed. I understand it was passed over before, and I think that's what he was referring to, where it should have been fixed prior to this. I had some really disturbing photos shown to me recently of some flooding on my street where trash cans were literally floating, cars were sunken in. So this is an issue, and hopefully it will get fixed, and the fact that it was not taken care of appropriately from the beginning is a fair statement to make. I hope that this petition for the multicultural business listing to get placed on our city website will happen this time. I did ask for this in April, and it was ignored. And I'm hoping now that Michelle and I really worked hard on this for a few years, and I want to thank Michelle for coming out tonight and all of the work that you have done on this, getting our businesses recognized, and so that we can know really where our businesses are and help support our businesses here in the city. It's extremely important for economic growth in our city that we are supporting businesses, and that would include the multicultural business. We are a very diverse city, and I think that this is very relevant for us to have here on our city website, and so that we can help prevent businesses from closing down and so they can prosper, and we can grow our economic growth within the city. It's super exciting. This hasn't been done, and I really hope that this will be done. It's a working document, and I think it's beautiful. And for this, Tina, thanks for coming out and talking about the street takeovers. That is extremely important. It's a safety concern, and I appreciate you bringing up the noise component because when we're hearing like all that noise, when someone is autistic or they have PTSD, even our cats and dogs, I mean, it's very upsetting for people to hear all this loud noise from the bikes. So thanks for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other members wish to speak? Any others? Any others? Hearing none, this concludes that portion of public participation responses. It is now 7:15. Our regular meeting will begin shortly.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council. The date is September 10th, 2025. The time is 7:21 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderperson McNamara. Here. Smedley.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Beloinesevra.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Barbosa.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Can we all please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, as we mark the 24th anniversary of the September 11th terrorist attacks, give us the strength and resolve to stay together as a nation in defending our freedom and way of life, in full will that under your guidance, we will continue to be the greatest nation on earth. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a point of personal privilege request this evening from Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Earlier today, Charlie Kirk, an American political activist, was shot and killed while hosting a peaceful event on a college campus in Utah. I happened upon a post from a Facebook friend that stuck with me related to this. All this guy does is go on tours and sets up events and debates people. He's passionate about his opinions and ideologies, just like everyone else is, and especially people in this room. He's a family man who just speaks his word, just like a lot of other people do, and he does it peacefully. And in return, he gets publicly executed. This country is scary. It's crazy. We as elected officials should not accept any form of political violence at any level whatsoever. Our thoughts and prayers are with Charlie's family and friends. Thank you.
It's appropriate to have a moment of silence. Please join with me. Thank you. Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of August 13th, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the regular meeting minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. I have no amendments to the agenda, Alderman. So, Mr. Clerk, we'll move into petitions tonight. I see quite a few.
Yes, Your Honor, we have five persons from Alderperson Beloinesevra for the appropriate departments to conduct traffic and enforcement at the stop sign at Alexander Road and Country Club Road.
Thank you. We'll send this to the Police Commission.
Number two from Alderperson McNamara for the Department of Public Works to install no outlet sign at the corner of Bellridge Road and Batterson Drive.
Public Works Department, please.
Number three from Alderperson Scott for a multicultural business listing category to be created on the visitnbct.com website within the Visitor Directory section.
We're going to send that to the Department of Planning and Development. What I would just like to request, though, is that the attached document be sent as the Excel file to the department as well.
Okay. Number four from Alderperson Scott for the New Britain Police Department to monitor the intersection at Waller Street and LaSalle Street.
The Police Commission, please.
Okay, and the last one from Alderperson McNamara for the Department of Public Works to assess deteriorating pavement on Inona and Sacum Streets and make any needed pothole and cracking repairs under the pavement management program.
To the Public Works Department, please.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll move along to the consent agenda. Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda of A, B, C, D, E, and F. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Let me rephrase that. Consent agenda of A, C, D, E, and F. E would be taken off.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Beloinesevra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Connors.
Yes.
Melonowski.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Santiago.
Yes.
15 present, Your Honor.
Motion carries. Item B. Somebody want item B off?
I'd say we can move on, Your Honor, because attached to the, attached to the report was a detailed description of the ages of the vehicles being sold to private parties.
Your Honor, make the motion to accept item B.
Thank you. Alderman Hargraves, seconded by Alderwoman Beloinesevra. Now open the floor for discussion on the item. I think anybody wants to discuss it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number one this evening, Alderwoman Beloinesevra.
Thank you, Your Honor. It gives me actually great pride to stand up and ask for everyone to accept and adopt item number one.
Second from Alderman Smedley.
This resolution went to committee where we had extensive conversation on it. I'm very proud to have been the original sponsor of the resolution. It is another tool in the toolbox for the Police Department in terms of what not only Ms. Santana was talking about, street takeovers, but any type of aggressive gathering of folks in motorized vehicles with people where they're observing and cheering it on and video recording it and really trying to make a big event out of it. So the state passed a law that allowed cities to implement this, and I strongly encourage all of my colleagues to support it. Not only does it give the police officers additional enforcement tools, but it allows the confiscation of the vehicles, the forfeiture, and ultimately, we can destroy the vehicle, and it increases fines not only to the people driving the vehicles, but for the people who are encouraging, organizing, and cheering on this type of illegal activity. So I hope all my colleagues will join me and support this effort to once again help the Police Department help us when we hear citizens' complaints about the dangerous activities. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other Alderperson wish to comment on item number one? Alderwoman Scott.
Well, first, I want to say, I was supposed to be reading this resolution, I thought, but that's okay. This resolution is extremely important, and it's necessary because it makes ways for us to keep our city safer and address those safety concerns. Many of my constituents have been complaining over the years about this because of the noise, the fear of being hit, and also the fear of accidents occurring, and also the fear of the people who are riding these bikes being harmed themselves. There's a huge concern with that. I want to personally thank Bobby Sanchez and the rest of our state delegation for the work that they did at the state level of putting this in place. So now, it can be introduced throughout the state of Connecticut and municipalities such as New Britain, so I support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other Alderperson wish to speak on item number one? Alderman Santiago.
Your Honor, I rise to support this resolution. As a bike rider myself, but a legal bike rider, it concerns me being a modelist behind these individuals, especially the youth, the young ones that are there that are not cognitive of what's going on behind them. They decide to do wheelies, decide, you know, burnouts, everything that, you know, that is possible, they're trying. Concerns I have is the chance that I might end up running one of them over if they make a mistake. And it was multiple times that I've seen where I had the chance of that happening, and thank goodness, my quick reflexes, it didn't happen that way. But there have been some other times it hasn't been, and I definitely support this 100% and that I hope that these young individuals realize that, you know, we're cracking down on this and be more responsible and more conscious of where they're at. And like I said, I rise for this support.
Thank you, Alderman. The other Alderperson, Alderwoman Barbosa. Thank you, Alderman. Any other Alder person? Alderwoman Barbosa.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I wasn't gonna rise, but, um, this is very important. I lost a brother to a head-on motorcycle collision. Um, the last thing I want to see is for a mother go through what my mom went through because their child was out in the street recklessly. My brother was a safe rider. Unfortunately, um, that evening, it didn't turn out good for either him or the individual that the collision occurred with. Um, so I'm asking for parents, if you have children that are riding these things illegally and recklessly, please have the conversation with them about safety. It's very important. Our kids are very important. And like I said earlier, the last thing I would want is for any parent to have to bury their child over such type of reckless incident. Thank you.
Any other Alder person wish to comment on item number one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Alderwoman McNamara.
Thank you. I make a motion to accept it in adoption number two.
I have a second from Alderwoman Smedley.
Uh, this is a resolution to, uh, approve licenses for the Festa Italiana to be held at General Amiglio on September fourteenth. Uh, I'd reference a report from the Police Commissioners. This will involve two officers, two cruisers, and some assistance from the Department of Public Works to have this good event take place with the street closure. So I move adoption.
Thank you, Alderman. Any questions or comments? Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, your honor. I just rise in support of this event. It's a fantastic community event that all are welcome to attend. Of course, there's the nine-thirty or ten-a.m. mass, um, that will then have the procession from the church around the block to the General Amiglio Italian Club. And this year, new at the festival is a car show, so I invite everybody to come down, uh, and check out the festival. It's all day. There's DJs, performances, there's a watermelon eating contest, a spaghetti eating contest, uh, and a wine tasting contest as well. So, hope to see all of you there. I will be, uh, helping out, volunteering at the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Alderman Santiago. Alderwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I made a motion to accept an adopt item number three.
I have a second from Alderman Santiago.
Okay, thank you. Then, uh, this resolution is about the Puerto Rican Society Festival twenty twenty-five, and it is to authorize the, to issue the New Puerto Rican Society licenses for the festival happening Sunday, September fourteen, twenty twenty-five, from twelve to eight on High Street.
Thank you, Alderman. Any questions or comments on this item? Alderman Hargraves.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to make note that, um, these back-to-back resolutions just show our heritage and our diversity here in the city of New Britain. So I'm glad that we are able to celebrate both the Italian heritage as well as the Puerto Rican heritage, and they're just two blocks away. So people can visit both on the same day. So I'm looking forward to this weekend, and I do urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Sanchez, item four.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I make a motion to accept and adopt item number four.
Second from Alderwoman Sovedra.
Thank you. This resolution is related to the Puerto Rican flag raising ceremony. And it's like this, to honor the mayor and the common council of the city of New Britain, they undersigned by leave to recommend the adoption of the following. Whereas the city of New Britain celebrates its cultural diversity and allows, acknowledge the invaluable contribution of the Puerto Rican community to the social, cultural, and civic favor of our city. And whereas the Puerto Rican community in New Britain has a long and proud history of leadership, family service, uh, civic engagement that has enriched every aspect of, of city life. And whereas the Puerto Rican flag is a symbol of heritage, pride, resilience, and unity. And rising in the heart of downtown New Britain reflects the city commitment to honoring this vibrant community. And now, to you, your honor, I would like to add a little bit of the historical flag. Thank you. Um, all right, the, uh, our flag was designed by Francisco Gonzalo Marin and created by hand by Mariana Bracetti Cuevas on December twenty-second, eighteen ninety-five. And in color, it symbolizes red for the blood shed by our brave ancestors, blue for the sea and the sky, and, uh, blue diamond, uh, means, uh, represent the three governments. Uh, Y for peace, victory, and liberty. The star symbolized the island itself. Our flag flew for the first time on March twenty-fourth, eighteen ninety-seven. And our national anthem, La Volguena, uh, was created in eighteen sixty-eight by Laura Rodriguez de Dio. And later was changed in nineteen eighty-five by Manuel Fernandez Juncos and officially adopted in nineteen fifty-two as the official son of Puerto Rico. Although many do not know that in nineteen forty-eight, La Ley Cinquenta Tres, Ley Mordaza, was imposed that law, uh, that law punished anyone who show, uh, show our flag in public with ten years in prison. The main intention was to persecute Doctor Pedro Aliso Campos. And year later, uh, years later, in nineteen fifty-seven, the law and the prohibition of our flag were, uh, since then, every December twenty-second, approximately five-point-nine million of Puerto Ricans living in the United States wave our flag with pride to honor and commemorate the sacrifice of our brave ancestors, those who fought and suffered despite all the racism, abuse, and attempt to destroy and erase our Puerto Rican identity. Um, now, the, uh, whereas the Puerto Rican flag raising ceremony will take place on Friday, September twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, at five o'clock at Central Park in downtown New Britain, I, I will bring together residents, families, and friends to celebrate and honor Puerto Rican pride and courage. And now therefore be resolved that the New Britain Common Council, through the sponsorship of Alderwoman Sanchez, uh, proudly recognize and celebrate the Puerto Rican flag raising ceremony to be held on September twelfth and encourage all members of the community to attend and join in honoring this important tradition. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any comments on item number four? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number five. Alderwoman Barbosa.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, item number five is the, uh, Resolution in Honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, and I'd like to read it into the record.
Need a second?
Oh, I urge adoption.
Second by Alderman Santiago.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is recognized from September fifteenth to October fifteenth of each year, granting us as a nation and a community the opportunity to join together and celebrate the diverse culture and acknowledge the abounding achievements and benefications of all residents with Hispanic roots. And whereas Hispanic individuals have made major contributions to the development of our country and our city through leadership in government, business, education, sports, and the arts. And whereas approximately fifty-four million Hispanic individuals reside in our country, making those with Hispanic roots the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority. And whereas there are over two-point-three million Hispanic-owned businesses, which have generated over three-hundred-and-fifty-point-seven billion dollars in our national economy, making them an asset to our economic health. And whereas the city of New Britain is honored to be a home to such an illustrious population and proudly recognizes all the accomplishments Hispanic men and women have made in developing this community. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of New Britain proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month and encourage all residents to celebrate with appropriate programs and activities that memorialize the contributions of Hispanic individuals to our nation and our community. I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other Alder person wish to comment on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Alderwoman Barbosa.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item number eight.
A second by Alderwoman Sanchez.
September as the ovarian cancer awareness month, and I'd like to read this one into record as well. Whereas ovarian cancer is one of the most serious cancers affecting women and often goes undetected until it is in advanced stages, making awareness, education, and advocacy critically important. And whereas September is nationally recognized as ovarian cancer awareness month, a time to raise public awareness about the symptoms, risk factors, and importance of early detection of ovarian cancer. And whereas the signs and symptom, symptoms of ovarian cancer can often be subtle, but may include bloating, pelvic or abdominal pain, difficulty eating or feeling full quickly, urinary urgency or frequency. And it is essential that women and their families are informed so they can seek timely medical attention. And whereas advocacy efforts and community organizations play a vital role in educating the public, supporting patients and families, and advancing research that brings hope to women affected by this disease. And whereas within New Britain, local healthcare providers, advocacy groups, and community-based organizations partner to provide resources, support services, and outreach to those impacted by ovarian cancer, ensuring that residents are not alone in their fight. And whereas the city of New Britain recognizes the importance of honoring the courage and resilience of ovarian cancer survivors, supporting families who have lost loved ones, and uplifting, uplifting the work of those who dedicate themselves to advocacy prevention and care. Now, therefore be it resolved that the New Britain Common Council hereby recognizes September as ovarian cancer awareness month in the city of New Britain, encourages residents to learn the signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer, and expresses gratitude to the organization, healthcare providers, and advocates who tirelessly, who work tirelessly to support awareness, research, and care in our community, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any other comments on item number six? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Santiago, item seven.
Thank you, your honor. Make a motion to accept, uh, resolution number seven.
I have a second from Alderman Russell.
Thank you. Um, I would also read this into record. This is important. This is something that actually was, I was there in New York when this happened. Um, but, you know, it was, uh, to, to her, to her honor, the mayor and the common council of the city of New Britain. Whereas most Americans, individuals around the world, will never forget the tragic event that took place on September eleventh, two thousand and one, which shook the core of our great nation. And whereas during these events, the people of this mighty nation joined together to help lift each other up, to overcome the country's greatest threat, and manifest to the world that man-made disasters and tragedies would not constrain the will of the American people. And whereas through our, through our darkest moments, the lives of many were unjustly taken. However, a resolution, resolution to survive, love, and flourish was not diminished, strengthening, strengthening the foundation of what America was built upon, forever uniting the American people. And whereas we come together to mourn all that was lost on September eleventh, we honor the memories of all those whose selfishness gave some pain, with, some pain with their lives to fight such terror and pay tribute to the role they played in strengthening this tendency, tena, tena, uh, hard to word, tenuous nation. And now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of New Britain recognizes September eleventh as Patriot Day and Nation, National Day of Service and Remembrance, as a reminder of all that was lost, gratitude for the many sacrifices made, and to proclaim that the unyielding strength of the United States of America cannot, cannot be destroyed by any evil acted inflicted on this, on its people. And be for, be it for the resolve that the common council of the city of New Britain encouraged all to show support for this day of remembrance by exhibiting the flag of our great nation, the American flag, outside our homes, our businesses, our municipality buildings, in honor of the many sacrifices of that heroic day. And join together to remember these events, honor all involved, comfort those who need comforting, and show love with these differences and deficiencies. And I urge adoption.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on item number seven? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, your honor. Make a motion to accept resolution number eight.
Seconded by Alderwoman Sanchez.
I also will read this one to the record. To your honor, the mayor and the common council of the city of New Britain, they undersigned by leave to recommend the adoption of the following. Whereas each year on a third Friday of September, our nation observe National P.O., POW, M.I.A. Recognizing, Recognition Day to honor the men and women of our four armed forces who were taken as prisoners of war or remain missing in action. And whereas the, they saw the day set aside to show that the American remember, that America remembers the sacrifices of those who defended our freedom, yet has not returned home, as well as to support their families who continue to endure uncertainties and loss. And whereas the city of New Britain, with its proud tradition of military service and deep respect for veterans, stand united in honoring the courage, strength, and resilience of these heroes. And whereas the POW M.I.A. flag serve as a powerful symbol of our commitment to never forget those who have yet to return as a reminder of our responsibilities to account for every missing service member. And whereas by recognizing this day, the city of New Britain reaffirms its dedication to supporting veterans, their families, and to keep alive the memories and sacrifices of our nation's prisoners of war and those missing in action. By therefore be resolved that the city of New Britain, I mean, the city, the city of New Britain's common council, through sponsorship of, uh, Alderman Santiago, formally recognize National POW M.I.A. Recognizing Day, honoring the bravery and sacrifice of our POWs and, uh, M.I.A.s, and pledge to always remember them and support their families. And I urge adoption.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments on item number eight? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, Alderman Pavone.
Thank you, your mayor. Uh, make a motion to accept item number nine.
I have a second by Alderwoman Sanchez.
This is, uh, to make September, uh, Leukemia Lethal, uh, Methemonia Month. This is the disease that kills fifty-four thousand people a year. And in Connecticut alone, you're talking about fifty-six hundred, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderman. Any questions or comments on item number nine? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Santiago.
Your honor, I would like to call for a recess, a five-minute recess.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor calling a recess, like if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in recess. The time is seven forty-eight. We'll be right back. We'll be right back.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to return back from recess.
Second, all those in favor of returning, please say aye.
Aye.
We are returned. The time is seven fifty-one. Seven fifty-one. And we are on item ten. And I will call on Alderman McNamara for item ten.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. This is a, uh, resolution to commend residents of North Bright Street for a neighborhood century celebration that I-
May I have a motion, please?
Oh, a motion. Motion accepted and adopted.
Second by Alderman Santiago. Thank you. Please continue.
Okay. I have my speech here. I was getting into. I came upon residents having a front yard get-together in late June, you know, during a home, National Homeownership Month. And there were eighteen homeowners celebrating the fact that their homes were a hundred years old or thereabouts, uh, on the street. The street is in Belvedere section, which, uh, Belvedere has a long history of affordable homes for generations of residents with interesting architecture. Three of the homes on the street are Sears mail-order homes, uh, when you could order a house from Sears Roebuck and get all the parts, then it would arrive. So I just want to commend Barbara Gass and eighteen other homeowners from eighty-seven to one fourteen Brighton, who organized a neighborhood century celebration that will be repeated every year. That's their plan. And I think this is a, a good example of what goes on in other, in, in neighborhoods throughout the city, uh, that people can come together, have pride in their homeownership, and it also brings people together in the community, uh, and talking to each other. So I move adoption. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments on item ten? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Simpson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I rise to accept and adopt item number eleven.
Second by Alderman Savedra.
Very long story short, uh, the city has put a massive amount of resources into its safety action plan with its Vision Zero Task Force, and is tying all these other city actors together, essentially to tackle the issue of pedestrian fatalities, serious crashes, and whatnot in the city of New Britain, to reduce those numbers to zero by twenty forty-five. And hopefully, this plan gets us across the finish line. I urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Simpson. Any questions or comments? Alderwoman Savedra.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm so glad this item is not being referred. Um, thank you for that. I, I just rise as a member of the task force. I didn't miss a single meeting. Um, it was a year of work, really good work. And some of the recommendations that came out are really positive. Some things we were already ahead of the game with, with Mayor Stewart and the complete streets. Um, some of the highlights of the recommendations are the redesign of some dangerous intersections with priority currently being given to North Street, Martin Luther King, and Stanley, that intersection where they all come together. That's part of the recommendation coming out of this plan, along with, um, automatic, automated street enforcement cameras for speeding and for red light cameras. People run red lights. That's going to be the following resolution that you see. Sidewalks, increased lighting, changing the way we cross the streets in downtown New Britain to concurrent lighting, all of that. Mr. Moriarty could come up and briefly talk about because it really was a year worth of work and milling through a lot of data. And I just think it's really good, um, since there was going to be a referral that as long as Mark is here, and we're not going to refer Mark, maybe you could come up very briefly and just hit some of the highlights from the work that we did over the past year. And I appreciate that because I, I really am proud of this. And the recommendations don't bind us, but they provide a roadmap for where we can go, um, hopefully with getting money from CROG to support those endeavors. So, Mark, if you could just briefly hit some highlights about Vision Zero. And all of this information is on the city's webpage. Everything from the plan to all the supporting documentation, to all our monthly meetings, all of that information, if anyone wants to do a deep dive, is on the webpage. So, Mr. Moriarty?
Sure. Um, the safety action plan, um, we have one of the few plans in the state. We have probably the most comprehensive ones in the state. Um, it was funded through an SS4A grant. Um, it was an eighty-twenty split, with eighty percent coming from a H W A. Um, and we started in earnest working on this with the task force in May of twenty-four. Met monthly, sometimes a little bit more than monthly over the course of a year, um, just to, uh, come together and understand what we were looking at. There was a lot of learning that happened there, a lot of collaboration early on as we were looking at the data. What the plan did, um, we established a goal. We talked about that last December. Um, the, the city council took the, the goal that was referred to them to the task force and established a Vision Zero goal of fifty cent, fifty percent reduction of serious injury and fatal crashes by twenty thirty-five and achieving Vision Zero by twenty forty-five. Probably, um, a very difficult goal, but like a reasonable goal. I think we, we, we have one of the better goals if you actually did a search of it. It makes a lot of sense. We looked at five years of crash data in, in the city between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three. I think there were six thousand crashes that happened over that period in time. Um, on average, there would be twenty-three serious injuries or fatalities that happen in the city each year, so about two a month. Um, and about three and a half, three to three and a half fatalities. Um, uh, there's more than that that actually happened on the interstate, on the highway system, but those are ones that happen just on state roads or local roads. We looked at, given that crash data, we looked at emphasis areas. We identified problematic intersections and segments of roads, combination of local roads and state roads that we know seriously for serious injuries, fatalities, and crashes in general. We know if those crashes are speed-related. We know how, what percentage of the crashes are occurred by younger people, older people. Over fifty percent of our crashes happen at intersections. We just have a lot of data and a lot of things that we can help us make decisions on with that five years of data and then looking at that data about where it happened in terms of mapping. Um, we did a lot of public outreach and engagement. I personally attended a lot of events around the city, like Younger Action Committee, Senior Center. I mean, we, we went to a lot of groups, um, a lot of collaborative groups that, a leader from that group was there that could reach out to other people. Um, we also had other five, five hundred people respond to our survey. A lot of them took a lot of time to write up what their concerns were, and we read, read those concerns. We came up with plans, um, like action items for the thirty-four locations that were either problematic segments or, or intersections on our roads. We came up with, in general, um, other practitioners. And like, one of them actually, when you're looking at doing, um, safety improvements, it's kind of, it's multi-fold. It's education, encouragement, engineering. And one of the education ones was actually worth noting because, like New Britain in partnership with Florida Ed, did the Lincoln School, bicycle education program, and they actually just are receiving a Vision Zero award for that. So that's, that's happening. It was nice, uh, to see one of the efforts that kind of is related to the safety action plan, getting a state award for their Vision Zero efforts. We also looked at policies and process changes, made recommendations for improvements to some of those. We came up with strategy and project selections. We have concepts for both, um, the intersection of Corbin and, and Lincoln, and also, um, MLK and North Street down to East Main Street. We're, we're, we have a good plan of action there. So we have concepts. We have, um, high-level cost estimates for those two. So we have all that and more. Also, we, we did a deep dive look at pedestrian activity in the downtown. Some, some of you were involved in that. Um, just looking at how people act. What have we found with that as our exclusive phases? Really don't make a lot of sense. Only seven percent of people actually even comply with them, stand there, uh, stand over on North Street over, um, MLK. You won't even see people in walkers or wheelchairs actually complying with it most of the time. It's, uh, so we're making a concerted effort to go concurrent LPI for, for those. And also, um, we looked at, um, what the next resolution is, automated traffic enforcement devices. And, um, you know, those are being implemented in a number of communities successfully. And everyone I know that's implemented so far has been very happy with the outcomes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any questions? Alderman Gibson?
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm definitely in support of this. Being official bike facilitator and trainer for the district, the school district, um, it actually got me on a bike after twenty years. But, uh, the bigger component was, um, educating the young, um, young, um, people and, uh, of this great city in hopes that this education will continue on um, throughout a lifetime, the safety and the rules of the world. So that, that vision will come to fruition for not just those that are here now, but beyond.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderwoman Scott?
I just want to, um, thank you for the work that you've done on this. Um, anything that's going to keep our cities safe and our kids safe, like I have witnessed a hit-and-run. Um, there's been quite a few accidents that have been getting reported to me where people's cars are just getting hit around the city as well now. Um, so I'm just really, I, anything that can keep our people safe. And then I really appreciate the community engagement that you've had because I have seen that at several events, um, giving out like the flashlights and the different things from the Vision Zero. So I think we need to just continue this work with this project and hopefully we'll address other intersections as we go on with this. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Savedra.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to accept and adopt item number twelve.
Second by Alderman Smithley.
Thank you. This is about going into an agreement with a provider, a vendor, excuse me, for the automated traffic enforcement safety device. Myself, Alderman McNamara, Chief Marino, Mark Moriarty, and CJ were on the committee that interviewed those that responded, uh, from CROG in the state list. They were, uh, pre-qualified. And we were unanimous in our selection of the vendor. And I know this too was, um, going to be referred. I'm glad it's not going to be. But I just want to say that there's five steps to putting, uh, speed cameras up. The first one was the ordinance that we all passed with a slight, uh, amendment because the council wanted to make sure it came back here. Today is step two, which is the selection of the vendor. But after today, when we pass this, the vendor works with Mr. Moriarty and the police department to actually identify the locations within the school zones, and they have to come back to us. So this does come back to the council again. This isn't the end of our involvement in street, uh, the cameras, the speed cameras. It comes, they come back with a proposal, and we actually hold a public hearing on it. So I know one of the Aldermen was concerned about the public having input into the actual locations. After the vendor works on it with Mr. Moriarty, with the police, it comes back to the council. We put it out to a public hearing, and then we vote on it. And then from there, it has to go to the state DOT for final approval. So there's many hoops for this to go through before a speed camera ever hits the streets of New Britain. So I just wanted to give people a peace of mind that this wasn't the end. It was just step two out of a five-step process to get speed cameras on the street. I also want to, um, highlight that it's cost-neutral. This vendor does not charge the city of New Britain any money. The vendor is paid through the violations. So it's cost-neutral for the city. I also wanted to say that, um, this is another tool. We talked earlier about giving police tools in the toolbox. We hear all the time about speeding in the city of New Britain. So I don't understand how anyone is opposed to a speed camera. It doesn't ticket you. The camera doesn't catch you and flag you until you're ten miles over the speed limit. And if you're driving by a school zone, and it's twenty-five miles, and you're daring to drive more than thirty-five miles an hour, you deserve the ticket, and I don't feel bad for you. And this is something we need to give the police to help do their jobs. They cannot be on every street corner, at every school, for every violation that occurs. But having this as a tool to help them is very important. So, um, I urge adoption. Thank you.
Any other Alder person? Alderman McNamara?
Yes, I participated in the interviews and the, uh, where did the vendors come from? They came from CROG, uh, from a board of which Mr. Moriarty sits, I believe. And the committee's, uh, decision on selecting this vendor was, uh, there was a consensus of who to pick. I might add, there was a dramatic difference in the per-camera costs, uh, for, uh, maybe by two thousand dollars or thereabouts. And, um, I think, as noted, um, only a couple, last couple of years, the number one thing we hear about are, are speeding and traffic situations and the need, the kind of urgent need for traffic calming measures of which are contained and can be considered, and other options, uh, through this process. So I would, I would, uh, say that, uh, the public will have input. One of the questions we had was, uh, uh, we, as all the people in the mayor's office, hears from the public about, with concerns about, uh, how is this going to work? Uh, we're both pro and con. So part of it's going to be an awareness to make the public aware of how this will work. And that as we put in the ordinance, uh, uh, authorizing from the state legislation, uh, these devices, uh, there'll be a public hearing on any locations that are selected with the emphasis on the six school zones in the city. So I, I also urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Connor.
Good evening, Your Honor. I, um, didn't expect to be called out here. I make a motion to accept and adopt item number thirteen.
Second, Alderman Cabon.
As a, uh, new dog owner myself, I think it would be great that the, uh, police department could also get on the bandwagon. Uh, this provides for a nine-thousand-dollar expenditure to get a, uh, Green Pointer K-9. Um, the, the dog will assist in, uh, very necessary tasks, including, um, locating, pursuing fleeing suspects, search and rescue efforts, evidence recovery, detection of narcotics, and implementing community engagement. Um, dogs can both help protect the peace and get folks, uh, more engaged and, and open up with, with officers. Funding's available in this, uh, through the department's budgeted account. And I do have one recommendation for a name that would not be too pandering, but with Stanley is a strong New Britain name for a dog. So just a recommendation. I urge adoption. Thank you.
Alderwoman Savedra.
You're too late, Neil. The dog's already been named. His name is Yeti.
That's an inferior word.
I just, I, I don't know what to say about it. That's the dog's name. Um, I'd actually like the chief to come up, um, and I don't know if any of your officers are here too to support it. I had the, the privilege of several times over my tenure here on the council to go and visit the K-9 unit and meet some of the dogs, not only when they're out and about in the community, which is fabulous. And they're such sweet little puppies when they're out working with the kids. It's so hard to imagine that they're actually sworn officers, if you would, um, that have a real, um, difficult task at hand and serve, serve us really well. Um, but I did get to meet Yeti. And, uh, he's currently in training. And I asked the chief if he would be willing to speak on the program because I just think it's an awesome program. And I'm always over there trying to meet the new dogs and seeing what the handlers go through. So, Chief, if you wouldn't mind speaking to the program?
Sure. Yeah, um, much like you said, we, we take a lot of pride in the program. Uh, we do consider ourselves with our K-9 unit to be one of the, um, you know, more well-known K-9 programs throughout the state. Uh, this started under Chief Orwell when we first brought in, uh, the department's first bloodhound, Marley,
who retired and actually recently passed away a couple months ago. Uh, Stanley was the name of our other bloodhound, who has since retired, which has opened the door for the newer K-9s to come on board. Uh, we do have the German Shorthaired Pointer, which is the second one the department will have, uh, Getty, and another shepherd that's come on board, Gus, uh, that was purchased through donations from Shaler, which was nice of them, they're the second, uh, business in the community to assist us with the program. Uh, and we're just very excited to get them through the state academy, uh, Officer Slope, who is on his second bloodhound, uh, Norrie, has recently become a certified instructor to actually teach other trainers, uh, and Officer Lett has been known to assist the, the state K-9 academy for the last several years, so we're very much involved, uh, and do take a lot of pride in the work that they do.
Hey, chief, it's five dogs altogether when the unit is complete, yes?
Yes, yeah, we'll have two shepherds, two shorthaired pointers, and the bloodhound.
Shaler just donated one of the dogs, uh, what was the other company that donated a dog that's already on?
Papa's, and that's Officer Munson's dog Dodger.
That's the, that's the big German shepherd, right, that everyone knows, knows and loves. Can you talk just briefly how you utilize the K-9 unit?
Uh, it all depends on what they're needed for, they're asked, uh, from, by several departments across the state, uh, everybody knows the bloodhound obviously is for tracking, uh, the shepherds are apprehension dogs, but also assist in, in tracking and evidence, uh, collection, and the, the German Shorthaired Pointers are strictly for evidence collection, or tracking, I should say. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number fourteen, Alderman Smithley.
Thank you, Your Honor, I make a motion to accept and adopt item fourteen.
Second. A second from Alderwoman Savedra.
This resolution is related to an amendment to the budget appropriation for capital improvement program, fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, better known as LOSFIP, and unfortunately, there was a reduction, uh, in the funding, so the appropriate budget, um, items have been adjusted and department heads have been notified. The new total budget will be one million, five hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents. Thank you. I do urge adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this reduction? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen tonight, said Alderman Mechner. Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor, um, I make a motion to accept and adopt item number fifteen.
Second from Alderman Santiago.
Um, this is for public bid number four-two-oh-nine, um, which was solicited, uh, and received accordance purchase order for the City of New Britain to purchase sand used for snow and ice control for city streets during the two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six winter season for the Public Works Department, and this is very important, because we need, um, snow, um, we need to have sand to help out with the snow and the ice, and the purchase agent is hereby authorized to issue standing purchase order for sixteen point twenty-five per cubic yard for the delivery of sand to the Public Works Department city yard for snow and ice control of the city streets during the year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, so I urge adoption.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carries, Alderwoman Barbosa.
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, I make a motion to accept and adopt item number sixteen.
Second from Alderwoman Smithley.
This is the authorization to submit for federal Highlands designation, I'm going to read the full resolution, but I'll read some ma- uh, major points to it. The Highlands region encompasses more than three million acres of Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut. Um, the Highlands region is an area of national significance, possessing substantial natural beauty, containing contiguous forests and productive farmland, numerous cultural and historic sites, plentiful recreation opportunities, and the protection and supply of important drinking water sources for over fifteen million people. Um, this was an act that was passed in two thousand four, and the mayor has been given the authorization to submit a letter and such supporting material that is required to request that New Britain be included in the federal Highlands boundary, and I urge adoption.
Any questions or comments on this item? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Alder Person Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor, I make a motion to accept and adopt item number seventeen.
Second from Alderwoman Smith-
Uh, this one is for more rollout trash containers, uh, for the City of New Britain, and the Public Works Department is responsible for the management of the maintenance of approximately forty-five thousand trash, trash and recycling containers used by the residents for the weekly and bi-weekly collections, and every month, over thirty trash containers on an average need to be replaced or, um, repaired, and so we really need more cans, and the funding is available for the purchase in the Public Works Department account, and I urge adoption.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor, I rise to make a motion to accept and adopt item number eighteen.
Second from Alderwoman Russell.
Very straightforward, these are tax abatements, corrections, refunds, uh, it's about twenty-seven thousand, going back to taxpayers, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, made by Alderman Santiago, seconded by Alderman Gibson, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Were adjourned, the time is eight sixteen P.M., have a great night.